2025 Fall Grants, I'll turn it over to the C A O to start.
Um. Perfect, thanks Cheryl Mida, I'm just gonna briefly go through some of the topics that I go over in my cover report and then I'll pass it over to Greg Hemphill from Community Forest who will be able to provide the Community Forest recommendations. So at the their September 18th meeting council set a maximum fall allocation for nonprofit grants of 640,000 and confirm that their current priorities for that Powell River Community Forest nonprofit grant program are for health-related facilities, affordable housing, recreation, culture and social goals for youth and reconciliation. The deadline for fall grant applications for nonprofit organizations closed on September 29th and the full list of applications under consideration and the individual application files were shared with city staff, the working group at the end of September and these files were also shared with all of council in advance of today's committee of the whole meeting. As mentioned, Greg Hemphill, who's the president of the Powell River Community Forest Board is attending the meeting today and he will be presenting the board's fall nonprofit grants as well as city project recommendations. A couple of the items from my report to highlight in advance of Mr. Hemphill's presentation, the use of the Powell River Community Forest Reserve Funds is prescribed in the Community Forest Reserve Fund bylaw, which requires the falling, which is before any money is used from this reserve fund, the city will seek input from the Board of Directors for the Powell River Community Forest Limited. Council must therefore seek input from the board but may direct the P R C F Reserve Funds at their sole discretion with the following restrictions. Monies in the Powell River Community Forest Reserve Fund will be used for special community project that benefit the community as a whole. So council may but are not required to grant the Powell River Community Forest Reserve Funds to nonprofit organizations as guided through council policy 261, which is attached to the report. The bylaw also says that the money in the reserve fund is not to be used for city operations or for capital expenditures of a regular nature and therefore council may not commit Powell River Community Forest funds to operation. Staff have also confirmed that monies from this reserve may only support projects that are capital and not part of regular core services such as sewer and water and road. So staff have reviewed the nonprofit applications recommended by the Powell River Community Forest Board and in addition to the information provided by the board, staff bring forward the following information regarding some carryforward projects which was previously passed on to council in the spring. So Project 389, which is the Friends of Cathat Clothing and Food Support. The comments from the spring were that this that grant applications from other community groups have been declined on the basis that these types of programs does not support capital projects, which is required as part of the Community Forest Reserve Fund bylaw. And what the the feedback from staff from the spring said was to comply with the bylaw and be consistent, it is recommended to encourage this N P O to apply for alternative funding source. The other grant or grant request from the spring that had some council comments, or sorry, staff comments on was 391, which was Timber Lane Fine Arts Association. And in the spring staff provided information to council recommending that the project not be approved as his funding request pertains to city infrastructure and would therefore require a city project application. Couple other things in terms of Powell River Community Forest input on the city projects, the majority of the projects reviewed and recommended for approval by the Powell River Community Forest have already been reviewed by council as part of the 2025-2029 Financial Plan bylaw approval process. But there are two projects that have a change of scope and funding and staff are recommending that the following two projects received increased funding this fall in order to meet timing consideration. So these two projects are 430, which is the City of Powell River Lager Sports Arena. And this project originally came forward with a budget of 30,000 in 2025 and staff are recommending that it be increased up to 60 and that it be moved this fall in order for timing. The second budget that has a timing request is the Seawalk Repair Project and staff are again are recommending that this budget be increased by 180,000 and that's for Project 435. This is because the there's some budget increases and in order to meet the anticipated deadline for undertaking the work, the budget will need to be increased in the fall. So as of the the writing of this report, council has an approved dollar value in the City of City of Powell River Financial Plan of just over 425,000. And to date has approved nonprofit grants of just over 560,000. So the the budget line item is over budget at this point in time. The total recommendations for nonprofit grants as contained within the Powell River Community Forest letter is 546,000, just over. So that falls within the the budget that council has set for the fall, which is the 640,000. So whatever dollar value the committee recommends and council ultimately decides upon, the existing funding allocation within the existing Financial Plan bylaw is is out of date and will need to be amended and any additional funds will come from the Powell River Community Forest Reserve. So finally, just speaking, speaking to the reserve, staff did provide an update on November 4th in terms of the reserve and it showed that there's a projected balance in the reserve to the end of December 31st, 2026 of just under $8 million. As noted in this report, that number does not include any projects currently in the five-year financial plan as those are being reviewed as part of our capital planning processes, sorry, five-year financial plan past 2026. So once that plan is updated, it's expected that that projected balance will drop significantly. But I'm happy to answer any questions before I throw it over to Greg to go through the Powell River Community Forest projects.
Any questions for the C A O's report before we turn it over to Mr. Hemphill? That's your second.
Thank you, I'm curious about the seawall through the chair. It says the 180,000 suggested addition to the original 800,000 is to assure Phase One. So I'm not clear on what Phase One is and how many other phases like that suggests that the even all this money may not fully renovate the seawall. I'm unclear on what we're actually going to get for that.
Yeah, good, good question. So the the first phase is the the funding that was anticipated in the budget for for 2025 and I'll throw it over to our interim Director of Infrastructure who can talk about potentially what the next phase would look like.
Thank you through the chair. So Phase One with the $180,000 addition to the budget was brought up through the design process with our consulting engineer. So they recommended that 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 budget be increased to complete the scope of Phase One. So so Phase One is, I'll call it the most critical piece to complete. There is a second phase that we would look to complete in a subsequent year as well, not as, pardon me, emergent, in need, but would be secondary, but something we would recommend in the future.
So what are we doing?
If I may, pardon? Yeah, so resurfacing more riprap, does Phase One achieve that? Increase in the elevation, as I understood was necessary?
Yeah, the Phase One through the chair, sorry. It it basically repairs the seawall, as I understand, to provide a stronger barrier against the sea, which is has been damaged through the storms. So it's about a 170 meter long section around the viewpoint, which was called the Critical Zone, which experienced the most severe damage from the past weather events. And then Phase Two would be immediately adjacent to that and that would be recommended as a as an improvement for subsequent year.
If I may, the main criticisms that or questions that we've received over the past two or three years since that storm relate to surface. And I think that the surface, as people have walked on it, it's become more solid and so more accessible to people with walkers and, you know, who have mobility challenges. But is that also going to be, will that be achieved during Phase One? Will it, will the surface be, I mean, I would imagine so because if the wall is going to be increased in height, then there will have to be a new surface, but then.
Yeah, so as part of the the work, this Seawalk Trail Surface within the section will also be resurfaced for the first phase and then we'll we'll look into the second phase, but yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the C A O? Seeing none, I guess I turn it over to Mr. Hemphill.
Thank you. Sundance has taken away some of my thunder here, but I'll just run through these quickly. It's always good to review how we got here. And really it starts with why the fund is in such good shape. We had a 2024 dividend, which was our third highest at 3.7 million and that comes directly after our 2023 dividend, which was a record high at over 6 million there. So we find ourselves with the highest amount of available money in the fund, which should cover both 2025 and if needed, 2026 grants there. In the spring, council went forward approving nine grants for community groups, total for In the summer, we call them one-off grants, but Power Community Forest recommended that the two city project budgets, budget top-ups in August. We recommended our, we provided our support for that. One was the Crossroads Building exterior cladding, additional 134,487. Good to see the work proceeding. And then the recreational complex electrical upgrades and emergency backup systems, which was another 447,324 there, bringing that project. I think the total is over 1.6 million, so that's a big project there. As Sundance said, the application review for the fall was delayed until September 29th, 25. Applications not selected in the spring carried forward to this fall review. A couple of applicants who received partial funding either submitted new applications or discussed concerns that the original project plans may be compromised. Not a lot, but there's a few there. Our board took a fresh look at the entire list based on our evaluation criteria and and council's priorities there. We did have a lot of good notes from direct follow-up with applicants back in the spring, including staff content comments. Not a lot of new comments for these new applications there. We're recommending 14 grants to community groups for a total of 546,251. The city has put forward seven new projects which are ready to proceed in 2025 or into 2026 and those are $847,000. Now, just wanted to remind everybody because sometimes the feedback back to applicants gets a bit confused. The reason some applications haven't been recommended by Powell River Community Forest, they're varied and really include our impressions on whether council was likely to support a grant and in previous years, whether there was monies available in the fund to do that many grants. Fortunately, we don't have that situation here, but we are trying to fit into a budget target there. So, next slide. Is there a?
It's right next to you there.
There you go. Carrying on with this, thanks for resuming the updates on monies available in the fund and the status of city and community group grant projects. It's it's good to see substantial progress on some of these important community projects and a more positive message about the fund. As Sundance said, city council set a $640,000 budget for community group grants and that was based on what's left of an average annual amount spent on community group grant projects. So over the last five years. Being results-based ourselves, we like that this represents completed projects. It's also a good way to track city projects. However, looking forward, that approach for budgeting doesn't really account for construction cost inflation or even on a smaller scale, some of the added costs now for architectural drawings, engineering reports, A I As. The city has seen that with their own projects with, in this group, three sizable project budget top-ups needed there. At the joint working group, we indicated to council, or indicated to the group that if council was contemplating supporting a grant which involved a large percentage of the budget, then the budget should be adjusted to ensure opportunities for smaller, ready-to- proceed community group projects could still be funded there. Our belief is if there's substantial monies available in the fund, council should retain discretion to take advantage of larger-scale transformative opportunities which may present themselves. The future probably involves projects with multiple funding partners or budgets can be adjusted there. Not all community groups are created equal. There are larger government-funded organizations with fairly substantial staff delivering important services to the public. On the other end of the spectrum, we have many volunteer-based organizations really define what the community is about and they'll always appreciate any help they receive financially there. Included in that group is the city's own user groups, leaseholders and tenants maintaining and improving city infrastructure there. We don't like to see getting caught up in the debate over who's in control. I think what we would like to see is that relationship of working together on those. Okay. Go to the list, I think council's seen all those, I can barely barely see it there. What I'll do is, oh, there you go. We'll just go right down to the to the grants and I'm not going to go through each, I can go through each one, but I'm not going to provide detail on each one. I think we can open it up to any questions that come up. To the extent I can, I'll answer those and if we can't answer them, we can certainly quickly get back with information following the meeting there. So if you go back up in the to the start of the projects, there you go. So working through these, any questions on 389? There was comments, Friends of Cathat didn't didn't agree with this because it wasn't capital. I guess it defined, it really comes down to what you define as capital. It's used to purchase clothing and food support, food cards for vulnerable students. We have funded it before, when I say we, the city and Powell River Community Forest, either directly or in a couple of occasions through Matching 100 Women Who Care. I don't think there's any question there is a need there. I think it's one of those ones that really just comes down to whether you're comfortable viewing this as something that fits our criteria there. So we're putting forward half of what was requested. I think their approach was so they didn't have to come back to to council midstream in a school year. I can't talk about 391, I'm in conflict, so we can come back to that if there's any questions and Rod's here, he can speak to that. Powell River Lawn Bowling Club, it's a city building, received a partial grant in the spring. They really could use funding to complete the proper structural and accessibility upgrades that were in their in their application there. So that's the money, the that 40,000 represents the reduction in the partial grant. 409, Powell River Brain Injury Society, accessibility and I'm trying to track this. Yeah, so that's half the request in the, I mean, you got to remember in terms of when these applications came in, it was mostly back in May, March, I mean, so it's been quite a time period, they've managed to come up with other funding in the meantime, which is good and they have come forward to us and say that they could reduce the requested amount to half, which is $15,000. I think that's the next one, 418, Cathat Regional Districts, Gillies Bay Tennis Courts Upgrade, 414, Brooks Birmbuster Mountain Bike Team Trailer, what it is is a rack, a purpose-built rack for their, as you know, Powell River hosted the B C Mountain Bike Get Together and and the Brooks has a team that travels to compete. So and School District 47 is a participant in that project there. Powell River Salmon Society, they have upgrades to the Duck Lake Hatchery, so that's the that's the one up in the community forest. And some of you have seen posted that they completed the grant from two years ago down at the facility down at the highway there and had a great salmon expo event a couple months ago. Cathat Regional Cycling Association, Burma Parking Lot is in the community forest, so they want to do parking lot improvements and and trail improvements. This could be directed, direct funded by Powell River Community Forest, but we also appreciate if council wants to be seen as supporting these important recreation projects there. We would put a criteria that the grants are subject to B C Rec Sites and Trails Approval and that's a provincial agency there. So if there's something that comes up where you want to have more money for another application, this is an option. The parking lot was built by Community Forest, basically for safety reasons to stop people from parking on the side of the Forest Service Road there. Powell Gymnastics Society, contribution to equipment upgrades. Powell River Quanis Village Society, kitchen and technology upgrades. They submitted two applications. We went back to Quanis and asked which one they consider as a priority and and that's that one. Our Curling Club, contribution to a backup generator. This is quite an expensive, this is a minor component of quite an expensive proposition there. Westwell Swim Swim Club, competitive swim equipment. I believe also the city is supporting them with other pool-related improvements there. So pretty important to see return to really a growing swim club there. We can do all we want with facilities, but we need them to be used. Powell River Healthcare Auxiliary, contribution to the Economy Shop Building HVAC Installation there. As you know, they had a fairly substantial application that was partially funded and they've come back with a new application which is focused on the HVAC installation there. Bang for buck, if you were wanting to support healthcare in in our region, this would probably be the best way to do it there. And Kelly Creek Community Church, the community pavilion is complete, Phase Two was upgrades around the around the grounds. There was three phases, we talked them into dropping parking lot type stuff and also back when they first started construction on the pavilions, we sort of said, let's see how that turns out. Well, it turned out great. So this is, it didn't get approved in in the spring, but they've come back in again. So. And this is where we'd like some feedback on from council. We would also draw attention to 406, which is the McBlack Together We Can Addiction Treatment Center, request to contribute to 195,000 cost overrun. Now, of course, the facility is completed. And also 385, which is Powell River, well, Youth and Family Services Society for the Foundry Project. This is a new application for 250,000. I think we can talk about that separately, but I think the other, the issue is, as we work through both these, was this notion that there may be a path to receive funding from the Cathat Regional Hospital District, but that required them being formally designated as a healthcare facility. So what we don't know is, is something actually happening there or is that just more of a response there? And Counselor Elliott can probably speak to this as best. Okay, so we'll we'll carry on, but we'll be coming back to that discussion on Foundry at the end. So that's the total grants for community groups under budget. Not by a lot, but a fairly substantial amount. And like I say, if there's something else that that you want to visit in terms of ones that didn't get supported, there is some available money there and then you do have the option of of letting Powell River Community Forest just undertake the parking lot improvements there. So, okay, let's go down to the city projects. You folks have seen most of these and generally speaking, our, well, more than generally speaking, the Powell River Community Forest Board supports those expenditures there. Think Sundance, have you ran through all these ones before?
Sorry, just to get my mic here. Yes, the the majority of these projects are actually carryforwards from last year's budgeting process and the ones that are needed upgraded funding or are new were in my report. So I believe council has all the information they need, but if they have any, need any more information, I'm happy to jump in.
Okay. Do you want to comment on the on the designated health facility issue now? Through the chair.
I have both questions and and yes, I can comment on that. So I sit on the.
I'll give you the floor for the commenting on the health authority part, we're not getting at the questions just yet, so you're you're a little bit behind the line on that one.
So. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
So for the Foundry and McBlack, the minister has sent a. So for the Foundry and McLaugh, the minister has sent a letter to the Cthet Hospital District that indicates that they can be designated health facilities if the hospital district forwards a letter asking them for them to be designated hospital, or health facilities. And it has a bunch of information that is required to go in that letter, and it goes to the minister, and the minister can contemplate and approve or not approve based on the information. And it requires support of the Vancouver Coastal Health through a letter as well. So that process has now been sort of outlined by letter from the minister for doing that. One of the things required in the letter is how much the Cthet Hospital District is willing to put forward in funding. That hasn't been determined yet. It's, we've asked a report from staff to look at those options and what the financial implications for the Cthet Hospital District are, so we expect to see that coming back in December. Then if letters go forward, we would wait for the ministry and however long it takes them to vet that letter or make a decision, and then at that point, we would know one way or the other. So there is no confirm, it, it, right now, as it stands, neither of those organizations are health-designated facilities. We've had some feedback from both organizations around what that would require for them and how it changes their own budgets. And so we're still needing to clarify some of that information before moving forward to make sure it's what they actually want. So I would say that it's appropriate for this body to consider funding the Foundry to show city support for all of their grant applications and outside interests. Many grants coming from outside of our community require proof that the, that the local government does support them as well, and then they, they help out a little better. It, it helps them get approval for outside grants if we ourselves are using our grant approval, our grant processes to support them. So we need to make a decision without knowing how that other one's going to land, and that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott. Just one quick call for clarification question, Mr. Hempel, regarding the Burma project. I saw your hand before. You, you mentioned Community Forest would help lower the cost. I'm assuming that means by Community Forest handling the, the building of it, is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, well, we would, well, first of all, it'd be a lot cheaper and faster if we did it, because we don't have to go through procurement and bids and all, well, we might get bids, but things like machine time, we can arrange that when other equipment's already out there. On-site supervision, we obviously have a forest manager very experienced in that. So we built a few parking lots just to get folks off the roads. So it's an option, we're not
I just wanted to clarify.
pushing it, but it can, can save the city some money if they wish to redirect it somewhere else in the budget there, so.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, I've got a few names here, so I've got Counselor Isaacson, then Counselor Douth, and Counselor Elliott.
Is Mr. Hempel done his presentation?
I believe so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you're done your presentation.
Well, we're, no, we're going to talk about Foundry, so it's appropriate to, at this point, now that we've seen the existing list, it's appropriate to ask questions around that before we have more of a general discussion around Foundry. If that's okay.
Okay. Okay, so did you have your question there? No, Counselor Douth.
I'm trying to work through just exactly what people want to recommend, what they don't want to recommend, so we can get, hopefully work through this tonight.
Yes.
I'm prepared to stay for a long time, but I'd like to work through it tonight. I want to understand what the Community Forest Board is recommending. And I think when I read this, that in your letter, appendix A, there's three pages, there's about fifteen community projects going down to number four twenty-eight that you're recommending acceptance of. You're not currently recommending the McLaugh Together We Can or the Foundry Project, and you're recommending going ahead with city projects, including the increases to the, to the logger bowl poles, an additional thirty thousand, and an additional hundred and eighty thousand for the Seawalk Top Up, is that?
That's correct.
Recommendation is, and I'm just going to suggest that it might help us to get through that this tonight, if when we're done asking all our questions and discussing things informally, that we have a motion to approve all of those, and if people want to not approve one or two of them, to make an amendment to the motion to remove ones they don't want to fund, because otherwise we might be here for a long, long time, trying to figure out what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
Am I correct in what the Community Forest Board is recommending?
Yeah, what you see in that letter is our formal public recommendations for full twenty twenty-five grants. It's, the city ones aren't grants, they're just basically our input in support of those projects with grant funds.
Counselor Elliott, then the mayor.
Thank you. So my questions are about some of the projects. The Power River Curling Generator, was that the full cost of the H, or the generator that they were hoping to install, or is that a?
Not, not even close, sir.
What percentage is that then?
Well, you're asking, dig back into the application, you have the applications, but it, it's a small percentage of the total cost.
Okay, so you don't know either.
Pardon me?
We can look it up, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
I just thought you might know.
Or even I can follow up with the email to, through, through Sundance, or.
Yeah, so someone has to look it up. Okay, thank you. The, is there a preference for the Community Forest Board for the, the Duck Lake Trails parking lot, whether it is done directly or indirectly? Do you have like, like I know you can do it, is, what, what would be your preference?
I think the preference would be to do it ourselves. And part of the reason is, we have great relations with Cycling Association, but there's quite a few spin-off groups and individuals, some of them that don't like the new reality, which is planning and consultation and a submission to recite and trails. So it does give us some on-the-ground supervision of what's going on in terms of construction and new trails. Like I say, good relations, but it is a culture shift where new development, basically, trail development basically has the same requirements that we do for forestry development there.
Counselor Elliott, just a quick pause, the CAO has a comment.
Thanks, thanks to the chair. The actual request for the generator is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also my question about the, the three ninety-one, I think it was, we had some comments in the report from the city that, that it, and I wasn't quite clear what the recommendation was, that it maybe is a city project or be handled through a city application? Does that mean not, not necessarily an external grant, or does that mean, what, I just want some clarity around that?
Through the chair, again, this, these were the comments from staff through the spring, but what I will note is that during the spring, council approved the grant to move forward, even though it was a partial grant moving forward for it. So I was just bringing forward the same comments, so council has already decided to move forward with a grant on that anyway. My understanding of how we typically like to do this is because it's a city piece of infrastructure, we would rather the, the user group come and talk to the city and run it through a city project, such as what's going on with the, the Kings and the dressing room, but in this case, this has already been partially approved as a project moving forward.
And if you want, I can add to that.
Yes, please.
In our grant criteria, we say that most projects involving city infrastructure will be managed by city staff, however, there, and it says, however, there may be efficiencies in having user groups take the lead on some smaller projects there. And so if you take a look at all the club buildings, for instance, up Timber Lane, just about all the previous grant projects have been done by whoever had the club building up there, so relieving staff from some of that workload there. So it's really a judgment call, but it's like, when you say who manages, who controls it, we have a number of great examples where both parties work together and everybody's satisfied, so that's what we would prefer than just saying, no, it's a city project, and we're going to wait until another year from now before we do it there, so. That's been the experience. If you talk to operational staff, they're very comfortable in those discussions that go on with, with the different clubs and associations there.
Yeah.
Thanks, through the chair, I'm just going to pass this over to Director of Recreation to speak to this, because he also works with facilities.
Through the chair, I think during this transition period, it will be a little bit of a dance back and forth. We do have some concerns when it comes to uncovering things like asbestos or other dangerous materials, costs can go up, we've encountered that in a lot of our buildings. That was one of the reasons why we initially said it's not a top priority for us right now as the city, we weren't going to do it, but we're happy to help out in whatever way we can. I think they, there could be significant unknowns, we just, we just don't know that right now.
So just as a follow-up, my recollection in the spring was there was also an external to building kiln that was required, or some such equipment that wasn't part of the upgrade to the building, and knowing that they had to work with the city to get approvals for any of the upgrades to the building that could come up with unforeseen expenses due to asbestos and so forth, the expectation was that they would work with the city to figure that out, but if they could use the grant for part of what they were trying to do, i.e. the kiln, that, that we would support that. Is this a, a new application? Have they focused on a particular part of that project, or is it the same one from the spring with no, like, what, what's the definition around what they are planning to use the current grant for? Have they received approval from the city for anything that they're trying to do?
I just want to make sure, which one are you talking about?
The Timber Lane project for, is that not what I'm talking about?
Well, I just, I'm in conflict with that one, so I'll, I'll rod up here.
Sorry. That is the one I'm talking about, so yeah, you might not want to talk.
Thank you, it, it's the same project, it's, it's not a resubmission.
Okay.
They were going to buy a kiln and make room in the building to store it. And they, no sense getting the kiln if they don't have a place to put it, I guess that's the point of the law.
Okay, and no further, it's, so.
Haven't done anything.
Okay.
Yeah, last I spoke to them, they hadn't received their contract yet.
Okay.
What was granted to them already, so. That's where that stands at this point in time, unless some changed in very recent very recent days.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Rod, maybe you need to stay up just real, so just a quick clarification then, because I, I'm seeing in the spring, we approved fifty-four thousand dollars flat.
Yeah.
This is for fifty-four thousand and change.
Yeah.
Same project, but two different parts to the project, am I understanding that?
Just a top-up of the, of their initial project that they had submitted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, did you have a question?
I did, thank you, through the chair. Mr. Hempel had indicated that the grants for community groups was five hundred and forty thousand and change, and that there was an opportunity for council to put forward motions to either amend that or add. My question is, I will be proposing that twenty-five thousand dollars be given to Prisma to help complete the arts sub-project, but I make that is as an amendment to the motion to approve the grants for community groups, or is that a separate motion?
I'll turn that over to the CAO.
Through the chair, if there was a motion, which there hasn't been yet, to approve the list as, as presented by the Power River Community Forest, that would need to be added. There is not a specific recommendation in the report saying which grants council should approve, so it's my expectation that someone will need to make a motion, and if there was a motion, it would need to be added to the motion.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, indications from anyone? Counselor Douth, and Counselor Elliott.
If we're looking for questions, and I have a motion to make if the questions are done.
I don't think the report is done.
I'm just asking the chair where we are.
Okay, well, are there any questions on this part of the report before we move on to another part? Mr. Counselor Paul?
Just one question before Counselor Douth, through the chair proposes his motion, and that is, in terms of logger sports and the replacement of poles, our Community Forest can help out with the, the, getting those poles, is that the intent?
Yeah, no, we've offered, and, you know, it's, to find them, it's ideal if we're logging, and we can find that type of pole, but we also have relationships with other companies, including Tlaman, and I know the previous poles were donated by Western Forest Products, so if that works, we would certainly look at doing something like that, a donation. But I believe staff are engaged with both Lager Sports Association and have talked to Chris Lang, our manager, on that, so, yeah, it's, it's in the works, I believe.
Thank you. I support Counselor Douth making his motion so we can get on, because, as we have always done here, there's a great deal of work and the research that's gone into this report on all of the various items that have been put forward and recommended by our Community Forest. It doesn't take staff time to do so, it saves the city a great deal of money in terms of this process, and the support they give to this community is just outstanding, because as I've stated many times here, where would we be without our Community Forest Board and those valued volunteers that provide this service? So it's time to make the motion, thank you very much.
Counselor Elliott.
Before we get to motions, I wanted to ask a little bit about the Brooks Birmbuster bike team, and whether they're actually a nonprofit society, or, or who are they? And how, how do they operate? Like, is, is the trailer so that they can go as a group and put everybody's personal bikes on it out for, for a ride, or like, what, what is it they're doing?
Well, mostly the, well, they, they will do local rides, but it's, it's a, it's a team, and they will go on the road for events at other places there, and they, they are getting funding from the school district for that.
Okay, so they're a school team that goes and does like competitions somewhere?
Yep, and local.
Okay, so, so that helps, thank you. And then, since everybody's commenting on process, it is my opinion that we can't deal with the overall recommendation until we deal with some of the things that were not recommended, because we need to know how much money we're dealing with, and I would prefer to deal with the Foundry first, before we get into that, because it's not in the list, and it's a priority for a lot of us, and so we might as well decide that one and then figure out how that impacts the rest. That's my, my thoughts on that.
Mister Douth.
Not sure how much presentation is still to go before we get into discussion of what's being approved or voted on, so is there more, just, because I don't think the city projects have much to discuss on, so.
I hope not, I believe.
I believe. I could be wrong. And I think you've gone through the list of nonprofits. Is there anything I'm missing?
No, I, I think, and we brought it forward, part of it was how realistic it is in the near future that there's going to be grant or support from Regional Hospital District to those two requests. So that's, that's something that's there, especially for fundraising for, for foundry. But also the foundry project itself, as you know, is, is a large request, which takes up a big part of the budget. And so ultimately, if council wants to support it, they're going to have to decide where the money's coming from. And it could be as easy as just increasing the budget. You're in that process now. But I did want to provide some backdrop to, it didn't just appear, this is, and the Sundance can speak to this as well. I did the, this was one of the ones I did follow up on, and this goes back to last fall. And again, in the spring, and council didn't approve the grants at those time. Now, I met with them in the spring after they found out it wasn't recommended. And the, basically, the comments I provided were the types of things that we had heard council comment before. So it's basically the size of the, of the request at that time was a million dollars, which obviously in the spring was ruled out. It's a provincial initiative, so there's always the discussion about whether costs are being downloaded to, to the city. It's private building improvements, so that's an issue. What should be the tenant? What should be the leaseholder? And then where, where were they at in terms of their funding process or their fundraising process and also construction schedule? And then, of course, the other one was whether they could be a designated health authority because they're seeking funding there. So, so like I say, I met with them in the, I guess, I don't know, that would have been back in June or July. And they've answered a number of those questions that are proposed. And I did send in a note through Sundance on some of the comments we had on this one there. So, so in our grant criteria, which everybody's read, is we do favor projects that are ready to go. So I don't think it's ready to go now. But on the other hand, we also say we support using grants to, to match or leverage other funding that might be out there. So this, I know they say that's matching a foundation's contribution, but it's really just leveraging other fundraising that's going on there. So there is, I mean, a lot of times these decisions come down to whether there's enough money to cover that size of projects. Well, we know there is enough money there. So I'll let Sundance comment because I did the follow up twice, and I think they were tired of meeting me, actually. So I asked Sundance to follow up and see if he could get a, a read on where they're at with the, on the fundraising side, and then on a construction schedule. And I don't know if council knows, but grant funds aren't distributed until there's a building permit in place. So they're a long way away from getting a building permit. So there's a bunch of options, including just making a soft commitment, funding it now, funding it partial to get them going. But I think those are the things that council's going to have to wrestle with there. And just, just generally, our board, just so there's no confusion, we think it's, we think it's an initiative which would be very positive for the community, but at this stage, it's probably not ready. So Sundance?
Yeah.
Through the, through the chair, I did reach out to Delith from the Foundry and Colette and spoke with them as well. I just asked for project timeline and updated budget, which they provided, which I provided to council. So everyone was up to speed on, in terms of where they're at. They indicated that it is a project that requires the funding and they're hoping to meet their deadline, but that they're also currently working hard to try to make themselves a healthcare facility so that they can access additional funding as well, and that that's their, their focus right now, and that they're looking to finalize their lease in December moving forward. So they, they of course would like as much funding as possible as soon as possible, but they have provided updated timelines in terms of what they're looking to accomplish. And that has been provided to council. I don't think there's any guarantees on any projects. It's really going to boil down to where the committee council wants to allocate their funding at this point.
So looking at the suggested recommendations in the package, I feel like we are about to play a game of what amendment or motion are we voting on now? And as the time is currently 10 to 5, I'm going to say we take a quick five minute bio break and let everyone get all their thoughts in order because I know our deputy corporate officer is going to have busy fingers pretty soon. And we will come back in a few minutes and start the fun. Get things, get things going over here. So based on, based on conversation we've had so far, it my, I have a feeling the recommendations that the community force provided are probably going to shift a little bit compared to what is recommended to council. So I have a feeling, recommendation one, to receive the letter as attached as is, is probably not the recommendation that we want. So if there are changes, additions, or removals from the committee force recommendations, I'd suggest we start with those and then deputy corporate officer will keep track and get us the total that we can then recommend to council. So we'll start with Councillor Isaacson, then Councillor Dought and Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. I think we can actually pass the first motion. It's only about receiving that, that, the letter for consideration. But is that the intention? Okay. I'll just make that first motion to get that out of the way, that the committee received for consideration the Powell River Community Forest Board Fall 2025 Grant Recommendation Letter attached as Appendix A.
Okay. Any deliberation? Doesn't seem like it. So all in favor? And all the hands are up, so that is unanimous.
What I, motion I intended to make was that the committee recommends to council, that council approve a Fall 2025 grant for $250,000 to youth and family for foundry. That's Application 385. And we don't need a second or for that motion. So just to provide my views on it, I do want to mention that council actually hasn't had a really robust discussion about foundry yet. I know Mr. Hemphill mentioned things that he's heard from council, and I think that he's heard from individual members of council, but we as a council, as a governing body, haven't had an opportunity to talk about this yet. And so this is a project that's not shovel ready, but they are, there's a lot of things going on with the space that they are intending to enter a lease agreement with, but to not impact that, those negotiations. I don't want to say too more. I do have a bit more information, being a liaison, to, to the foundry. But they have a big capital funding campaign. They're working on a project that the operating costs are covered by the province. I know that there's concerns about, for example, provincial downloading, and I think that's valid. I think a lot of the work that our community groups do from big and small are downloaded from the province. They are things like poverty reduction, these are conservation, parks and recreation sites. These are all things that the province has often downloaded to community groups, and this is one of them. And so the question for us is not whether we advocate to the province to remake the system. It's we have this opportunity in front of us to develop services for youth in our community and whether council supports it or not. I also, I, concerns about it not being shovel ready. This is a, a large capital campaign by foundry. And given that groups cannot 100% know whether or not they're going to get the funding when they apply to community forest, having everything in, in line and being completely shovel ready and having contractors lined up is, is not, is really hard to do when you're dealing with a really big project because it represents a lot of risk. And in this case, the city's not the only funder. If the city contributed $250,000, it's not even a major funder. The major funder is Foundry BC. They, to the capital cost of this project, are donating over $1.5 million and are working with Foundry on fundraising activities. So this is like a really big effort. Youth and family are incredibly active doing fundraising and both for small donations and for large grants. Their intended site, which is still not public, although some people say it's the worst kept, the best, the worst kept secret in this community, is a private site, but the lease is, I believe, over 20 years. And so, and the improvements that are made are ones that potentially can be taken with the, taken and removed in the future. A lot of the work being done to the space, the core work or some of the core work, for example, HVAC and stuff, there's a lot of work being contributed in demo by the landlord. And so, and so I do, I do understand that there are, there are hesitations. I think for me, ultimately, going into a financial year where there are a lot of fiscal challenges that our community is facing, and we only have one big pot of money to draw from, and some of that's from taxation, some of that's from fees, some of that's from long-term borrowing, some of that's community forest dividend, we have one pocket. And the question is, how do we draw money to, to pay for our roads and sewers and water and, and planning and parks and the rec complex, et cetera, et cetera? And so the question for me is, what am I willing to ultimately tax for? Because when we draw from community forest, it means that community forest money can't go to some of our important community projects like the rec complex. So there's a bit of a give and take. And, and so my, in, in moving this, I, because it wasn't on that list, I wanted to make sure that it, it gets addressed and council can decide whether it wants to move forward with that. I've heard from other people, they may have other individual motions that haven't been put forward on the recommended list, but this is an important one for me. They applied last fall, were given some advice on things that, that the board was looking for in their application. They resubmitted in the spring, as far as I understand. But things are getting closer. The, the hope is to, to do a lot of the work in 2026. And so any ways that we can demonstrate to them so that they can demonstrate to other funders that they have community support behind them is really important. I appreciate that the, the Regional Hospital District doesn't yet have an answer and hasn't made a decision on how much they will fund. And I think that's a valid difficulty for us in, in figuring out what we want to contribute to this. And what I will say is, we, we're going to have to make that decision without knowing the outcome of that. I hope that the regional district will also contribute, the regional hospital district will contribute generously in the sense that this is a service for our entire region, not just the city. And the city would be contributing through the regional hospital district in addition to anything that we decide to, to provide here. I think it's okay for the city to pitch in a little bit more, given the proximity, it's going to be in the city, it's going to be the easiest to access by, by youth residents in the city. And so I'm willing to contribute a little bit more. And so for me, the question coming into this really difficult discussion, knowing the, the really great work that the, the community forest board does in building relationships with community groups, the long history and great work that they do in funding those groups, I am looking at it from a, a pretty fiscal and services perspective. What am I willing to tax for, basically? Because everything is connected, one big pot. What am I willing to tax for? And for me, that is the creation of a center to serve fundamental services for youth for our community. And so I wanted to get this off the bat so that, so that we as a group have a sense of where we're going with our money after this. But this is, my deepest wish is that we send a really strong message to the youth in our community, that we care about their well-being, the city's behind them, we want the foundry to succeed, and we're going to, to do that by contributing a chunk of money. It's not as big as Mclat received, it's not as big as the Cycling Association received in terms of big, big chunks in the past. And so this is, this is, my hope is to demonstrate to youth broadly in our community, especially youth that are struggling, which is many of them, who are looking for health and services, that, that city council is, is willing to, willing to step up with our, with our money. Thank you.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor, and so we're going to be spoke, focus our conversation around that right now. So I've got Councillor Southcott and Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. I do support this, even though I have to say I have serious anxiety about the budgeting process we're going into this year. To invest in youth is to invest in the future of our community. That's fundamentally why I support this. And this is a specific investment, or this is a specific commitment to an investment to youth. It's something that I've been interested in, researched and followed for a long time. This program basically resembles something along the lines of initiatives many years ago in Iceland that were followed through Europe. In thinking about that carefully, I, and they were very successful. In fact, providing services for youth like this creates a future where the society is not spending money on fixing problems that result because unhealthy life choices are made instead of healthy life choices. And that's what foundry is all about, and it's been proven through many other examples. Was it 18, I think now, in British Columbia? They are successful. And I want to see us invest in our future. The problem for me with the Iceland and European models are that most of those governments are unitary. The style of governments in those countries are unitary. That means there's no provincial or, or territorial governments. It's local and federal essentially. So the money came from the feds, and that is unfortunately, our situation is different here. What's happened over the whole time that I've been involved in local government is that, yes, there has been what we've called downloading. There's been a slide of responsibility to our level of government. And there is that we can very validly say, no! This is, these are things that are responsibility of society in, at the senior levels. And that's what happened in Iceland and in Europe. But what has happened as well is that not only have the responsibilities slid, partly because, because local, local governments and local communities can look after the specific rollout of programs and responsibilities like this better than central government can do it. And that's been proved here over a long period of time. What has happened is grant money has followed, often from senior governments and also other institutions. And this is what has actually fueled foundries around British Columbia up until now. We've been told that currently this foundry is having more trouble than other foundries have had. But the, the way to, to secure other institutional funding, the way to inspire that is to make a commitment as a local community that we are behind this. And very often, that is what it's taken. And we've seen this happen in times before with money from the community forest, where this kind of commitment brings money from other institutions that will step up with significant amounts, which obviously is what is needed for foundry. So that, in a lot of words, is why I support this commitment now. And obviously, this money will not be spent for some time, but it's a commitment, and I, I want to make that commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor, Councillor Elliott and the mayor.
Thank you, Chair. So I, I support the motion. There's a, there's a lot of need in our community for supports for youth. A foundry is a drop-in for all kinds of health facilities, both physical and mental health services. It's a space that youth can drop into, connect. can drop into, connect with one another and also have access to social services. Um, currently in our community, which requires ferries and, and airplanes to get out of, um, there is zero, uh, beds for mental health for youth, none. So if your child is in crises for mental health and goes to our hospital, they, um, they can't keep them. And if they do, there's only one emergency room with a padded room where, where those kids can stay. It's, it's inappropriate, um, environment for a child in mental health crises. They're not allowed to be in our psych ward because there's adults in the psych ward and they're not allowed to, they're not permitted to put them there. So they can't access the same services that adults can in our community when there is a mental health break. I, I know this. I had a child with a mental health break. It was absolutely horrific. So the foundry doesn't have overnight either, but it has all of the services that help with prevention, mitigation, creating the situation where children don't get in crises in the first place and they can support children through services as an outpatient basis. There's no lineups. It's an on, it's, it's a self-referral. So young people don't need to talk to necessarily adults in order to self-refer themselves to services through this foundry. And let's talk about numbers. So currently the foundry has identified 2.7 million toward their goal for, um, construction. And, uh, they are requiring, um, between 1.5 and 2.9 additional dollars. They have asks or applications out for 1.415 of that, uh, amount of that 2.9. And they, um, will be more successful with their ask in a lot of cases if we as a community can show support directly through grants through our avenues. 250,000 is only 25% of the original ask. Um, we have set a precedent at the community forest for, um, supporting MCLAT in their facility and I strongly supported it then and I still do. Um, we've already provided in the case of the MCLAT, uh, in excess of $900,000 through the community forest, money well spent. So I think, um, currently what the foundry is dealing with as far as immediate pressures is to show that they are going to meet their goal so that they can go ahead and lease their space before they lose it. And without helping them get to that target, um, and they think if they can identify 3.8 up from the 2.7, that they can actually feel competent about moving forward. And so, um, what we can do as a community through the community forest is provide this $250,000 grant that indicates support of our community toward a service that is absolutely needed by youth in our community. It's, it's a huge gap. The, um, lack of services for youth is turning into extra visits to the hospital, um, youth that are aging into situations that aren't great for them as adults. And we can do better. And I believe that the foundry is a critical service in our community and we need to support them. And so more critical than anything else on this list today, in my opinion. So I will support this motion.
Thank you. Mayor and then councillor Palm.
Thank you. So I did significant research on Foundry in BC and I circulated to council some of the findings. So first of all, the normal procedure, putting Foundry in place is to identify a substantial partner like the John Howard Society. Society that's been in practice for over a hundred years and has demonstrated the ability to use their funds and other funds to complete a project and to ensure that the project will continue. I agree that the potential outcome of Foundry in Powell River is worthwhile supporting. Why I can't support this is I have just heard generalizations and lack of details as to who is running the fund campaign, who has been approached by the fund campaign. I think we are way too soon to opt into this and provide money without the answers as to whether or not we'll be sitting here in one year, two years and nothing will have happened. Good donors, both individual and foundations, look for a business plan that makes sense. I have seen no business plan for Foundry that would make any sense. And I've raised money for 50 years, tens of millions of dollars for a variety of projects. And what I see from Foundry is just a lot of generalizations and we're, we're talking to people and if this works out and we get some money, then something would happen. So if there was a legitimate plan put forth, I would definitely support it. I've already said that early on, even before this became a question, I made a donation because I was hoping that people could use that donation to get start of a good business plan to facilitate their funding. And I hope that in the future this will happen, but now I can't support it.
Councillor Palm.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I've heard the, the mayor talk about this in our, uh, working group level. His research indicates that, uh, there are no foundries in the province of BC that has been supported by municipality or cities. That tells me maybe, uh, this is a little premature. The Foundry organization can always come back when they're ready, once they get their health status, once they get additional funding and things in place. Our community forest board has done their research and they're coming up with the same answer that this premature. Um, and I hate to tell you, but council set a, and staff set a limit of 560,000 for nonprofit. This is an ask of a million dollars to start with. Now we're going to contribute 250, which puts us well over that 560,000 dollar threshold. Uh, at this point in time, I cannot support this, even though I worked with youth in this community directly with, for 40 years, supporting them every step of the way. And I would love to raise my hand in the air right now. But with the uncertainty this city is facing financially for the next couple of years, and this being a premature ask, I cannot support this motion, even though I would love to. For all those various reasons, we should just hold off, allow them to get their health status, reach out to other funding agencies, and when they're ready, come back to us. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor.
Well, you know, what we're talking about right now is there are recommendations from the city and from the community forest about the fall community forest grants. Now, we've, we've got an organization in place called the Community Forest Board, who does a great deal of work for us all year long. And looking at all of these applications, going through their priorities, going through their requirements, looking at each one of the projects and making recommendations on what the city should spend its money on and what it shouldn't sometimes. We've heard, uh, from the board, from Mr. Hempel about why they are not recommending a grant to the, to the Foundry in the fall 2025 round of, uh, donations. And I think if we're going to have an organization make recommendations to us, we should respect that. When they point out things that, uh, like there is no building permit in place and that's one of their normal requirements, it makes sense. We can make a decision to donate 250,000, but we know it's not going to go anywhere before the end of the year. If it does, it's going to go somewhere next year. That'd be an opportunity to apply in the spring 2026 grants. We don't know what the regional hospital district is going to come up with, whether the ministry of health is going to make a determination that Foundry and MCLAT are both healthcare services. If that determination is made, then the regional hospital district would have to make a decision to make a decision or on how much the regional hospital district wanted to contribute and look at what the taxation is going to be. Because the only place that the regional hospital district gets money for is direct taxation. They don't get money anywhere else. So that's coming. So I'm, I'm against this motion primarily because it doesn't fit the requirements of the community forest board. It's not recommended by the board and I think it's premature.
A question for staff. Um, we know that, uh, these funds for community forest grants are only issued when projects are executed. Uh, we know based on the current timeline, this project is, is not likely to be started in the next six to eight months, if not longer.
That's not true.
That's not true? Okay. My mistake then. Uh, that might eliminate my question then. So councillor Elliott.
So some of the other information that might be helpful to know is that should the foundry decide or get to a position where they can secure their lease, that could be any ti, it could be like today, tomorrow, next month. Um, they then have nine months, um, whereby they don't have to pay. And once they do, it's operational. So that's covered by their already secured operational funding. And, um, that nine months is then used for them to, uh, the, the landlord themselves is, is spending, I think upward of $900,000 to make the space empty, ready and, and do upgrades to make it, uh, make the empty space perfect for what it needs to be. And the, the funding for the upgrades is to make, um, clinical rooms, you know, the interior, uh, division of buildings and spaces. And, um, it isn't for the actual building space. That $900,000 is coming from or in excess of, from the landlord, should the lease be confirmed. And so, um, there are a lot of moving parts, but the intention is to get the money secured decisions done within the nine-month span. So, um, yes, we don't disperse money before there's a building permit, but we've never ever before required a building permit be in place before we actually make a decision on grants. That's not been something we've required. Um, the dispersment is subject to, but not the, not the actual approval by council. And many of the questions that are coming up in our conversation today are a scrutiny that we haven't applied to anybody else. For them to relay the types of details publicly that we are asking for is unreasonable. I mean, if we wanted to have this conversation with them, we could invite them here to an in-camera meeting where they could talk to us very frankly about information that's part of their negotiating processes. But we don't, we haven't done that. And so that's why your questions are, are unanswered. Um, I've been part of an in-camera conversation and many of these details could be available, um, directly through an invitation such as that. Um, so I think the scrutiny that people are applying to this didn't exist for MCLAT, doesn't exist for anything else on this list. And quite frankly, I don't understand why any of it is resulting in not a recommendation for our community. The need is there, the answers have been put forward through application. This is their third application to the community forest. The idea that it's not moving forward imminently is not correct either. They're moving forward tomorrow as soon as they get some answers that they need. The Cathet Hospital District is moving forward as fast as they can. We're expecting a report in December. So we're not going to relook at this in December. We're looking at it today. And without make, making a contribution to this project, uh, it could undermine their applications to other people who are looking to see if there's city support. So we could look again at the spring. If the situation's new and they're shy another $200,000 or whatever, they could make another application and we could look at it then. But to get them moving, I think we should, we owe it to them to, to help them. Because not only do we need it, these things that people are saying aren't in place are. They're there. And so if you really have questions, don't just deny their grant, invite them in to talk about it so that they have that opportunity. Um, and I would go for all of the grant, the folks involved. Thanks.
So my question that, uh, thank you for the information. My question, I guess, was, and I don't think we've done this in 15, 16 years of the community forest, but I am trying to, to recognize here, um, the challenge we have with the budget that we've already pre-allocated, which I was the only one that voted against, uh, a nonprofit budget, uh, a couple of months ago, partly for this discussion reason. Um, and recognizing the, the challenges that we have. So my, I guess my, my question to staff is, could we commit this motion and, and not push it forward to 20, to the spring of '26, but could we pre-commit it to the spring 2026 intake so that there's a commitment letter from council that count, that the community forest grant is pre-approved, they don't have to reapply, and whatever that number is that community forest has to work with in the spring, that amount is already deducted from there. And I don't know if that's feasible or not, but I'm thinking outside the box.
Um, let me just ponder this for a second. I, I think you could. I mean, the reality is that council makes commitments through motions in terms of what they're, they're looking to do. Um, and if council decided that this was a project, that would be one that was going to be, um, pre-approved for the, the spring, that motion would take place. Ultimately, it's up to the same group of individuals who make the motion to follow through with it at the end. And that's, that's all I could say with it because it's, it is a motion, it's on the books. We as staff can move forward within that construct, but ultimately when this comes up again in the spring, it would be up to this group to, to move forward with it.
Okay. I will go to councillor Palm, head one, then councillor Isakson, then.
Thank you, Chair.
Wait, hang on. Sorry councillor Palm, corporate officer might have a comment. Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, we had reached our two-hour time limit since we started before. Um, so I need unanimous consent to continue our conversation. Do I have anyone against that? I'm seeing anyone against that. So thank you, corporate officer. Councillor Palm.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I, I hear councillor Elliott with passion and I hear councillor Isakson, this is a prep project for them because they initiated this some, some way, shape or form. I get it. I get it. You're passionate about it. But there's, there's all kinds of city issues that come into effect here. And, um, one of the things that is very important to me is that this organization needs to be ready and show us that they have a building permit, occupancy permit, whatever it is that they need to go forward and not just donating a quarter million dollars for whole, a whole period. I would love to see them come back to this chamber in the spring, give us a valued presentation, tell us where we're at, and hopefully they got those things sorted out with health status. Because if they get their health status, one of the things that they're going to be, uh, able to do is apply for further funding. And I'll, I'll give you a prime example in our community. Malat has a couple of residences. And I'll give you a prime example in our community. Mclat has a couple of residences or people that have recovered that they house over in the town site. And Mclat just bought a house next to my neighborhood, a brand-new place, for $1.2 or $3 million for that purpose. The funding is out there, but let them prove they're worthy of it. Let's not be premature before they get that status. That's what I'm saying. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Isaacson?
Thank you. A couple of things. This is not a pet project of mine at all, Counselor Palm. This is something they came to council looking for a liaison. I'm interested in youth. I offered to be that liaison, and council appointed me. That is the extent of my...
Respect, Counselor. No disrespect.
So I wanted to clarify that. My concern about delaying it to the spring is the spring grant process. We end up not approving things and getting grants out until like May or June. And so spring is not like February, March. It's quite a bit later. So in my work as the liaison to the anchor table, I've seen, and then going to some of their public events where, public input events, they've been getting feedback from book students and advisory committees. Like they're... Foundry BC supplies them with an architect, designer person. Like they're moving this along. They've gone through a couple iterations on design, and that design is very specific to this community. Like this is in progress. This is not about waiting until next September to get started in construction. Like this is a current-going concern. My concern about waiting until spring is that it further slows things down. And because this is such a big project, like the overall funding need for this project is bigger than any other project we funded. It's not the biggest that we funded, but the overall project envelope is huge. We haven't donated to a capital project of this size. And so this is about momentum and a fairly tight timeframe for them to carry out the work successfully next year. And so I want to be clear that there is work already in progress. This is not, they're not waiting around. They have very strong support from Foundry BC, which has operated, opened and operated a number of foundries throughout the province. They have an established process that they go to, established governance model to support the lead agencies locally. Youth and Family has been around for 30 years providing services to this community in terms of having, being a solid organization in this community. And so I am, like, yes, I would support a spring grant, but we can also grant now to carry that momentum, to give them some momentum, and allow them to start work with confidence and also bring in more money. Like they have a lot of money to bring in, and they're working hard to do it. And they've been successful so far. They need, they have more work to do, and this is a part of that work. And they are working very hard. So I... Yeah, I can't reiterate enough that while not brought forward by the Community Forest Board, we have to weigh and consider our options. And again, what I'm willing to tax for, what I'm willing to put my weight behind, obviously my passion behind, is this project because the gap in our services in this community are so dire. When we talk about, you know, upstream supports so that we don't end up with people struggling with addiction and homelessness, it means intervening with youth before they are in crisis. And that's what Foundry is meant to achieve. And I think it's valid for people to have questions. The answer is not to reject it outright. It could be to, if there had been concerns, like there are some things that I haven't known about Foundry, and I've reached out to them to ask follow-up questions. And so being fully informed with the local facts. And so repeat my support for this motion for the fall intake grant cycle.
Mr. Hempel, I see your hand, but I don't think more conversation is going to help at this point. I think everyone's got their stake in the ground. I'm even going to deny Counselor Southcott from speaking. The question is acceptable.
I believe I heard Mr. Hempel say that the money wouldn't be dispersed until a building permit was in the hands of the project. That means that essentially, this is a commitment that there would be no money given until it was assured. Am I wrong about that assumption? I guess I'm asking through the Chair.
I believe that's correct to staff?
To staff?
That's my understanding as well, noting, of course, that this is my first time going through the process. That's my understanding of how we actually distribute the funding.
Well, I think we've discussed this enough, so I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. And, okay, so moving on, I had Counselor Douth second up on the original list. So if you remember what you were going to say?
Going back to that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to move that council approves the projects in Appendix A recommended by the Community Forest Board for the fall 2025 grants. And I don't have a seconder, so I'll just go on and suggest that this provides all of those grants that the Community Forest has recommended, includes the extension to two city projects, the Lager Sports Pole replacement costs, and the Seawalk improvement increases there. If anybody has any motions that they would like to remove, any of those projects they want to remove, they could do that through an amendment. And if anyone has something they need to add, they could do that by amendment as well. I'm prepared to follow the Community Forest's recommendations and approve these as they are.
Hey, Counselor Elliott and Counselor Southcott.
So under the proposed second motion in the package, it dealt separately with the city projects and what was required from that motion. And then the third one was to deal with the motion that Counselor Douth just mentioned, but just didn't have a number in it because they weren't sure which projects the city would or the council would approve. So I'm wondering, is he trying to cover off all of the number two motion with his thing? Because there's some other stuff in that motion that he didn't include. And so for clarity, I think it would be better to not amend and include the city projects and do the motion in the package for the city projects. Because it has more clarity, and there's no reason why we shouldn't have that motion separately.
Leave the recommendation number two in the package will still need to be done separately as it has specifically to do with the financial plan bylaw. I believe Counselor Douth, if I correct me if I'm wrong.
I think that's right. I don't think we can amend the financial bylaw with a motion to do that.
But I believe your request was the specific recommendations in the Community Forest letter that add up to $546,000.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Okay. So then I would also like to amend the motion to exclude Project Number 389 on the grounds that it is very similar to Food Bank and many other folks that we, that don't fit our criteria for the fund. It's not capital in nature. If it was for a bin so that they could accept clothing donations or something that was capital to their function, that would be one thing. But this is, like, similarly, giving out cash, food, clothes, it's all part of their operations and isn't eligible for Community Forest funding. Application 389, Friends of Cathet for Clothing and Food Support. I think it's a very worthy cause, and I give to that cause myself. My point is, is it doesn't fit this funding parcel. And so I would, I'm wanting to remove that one. Item Number 391, the Timberline Fine Arts Association, I want to remove that project because I think the city isn't confident that the building upgrades that they want to do wouldn't, would fit within the budget that they have. It hasn't been determined whether there's asbestos that might include increased budget. That happened at the museum not very long ago. It created a lot of problems. So until they have a better sense of all of that, and the city and the association are both thinking at the same time that they're ready to move forward, I think we should put that one on the shelf. I want to remove Number 416 in favor of them directly funding that through the operations of the Community Forest, as was stated the preference for them. And I would like to remove the Kelly Creek Grounds upgrades because we funded a lot of upgrades there, and it doesn't really fit the priorities that we asked for for this grant intake. And I'll stop there. I think some other folks can have a crack at that, too. But those are my list of removals in entirety.
Okay, so if we have that all, we have requests to remove 389, 391, 416, and 428?
Yes, please. Thank you.
On that. So that's the motion we have on the floor. We'll discuss that motion and then move on. So comments on that?
So this is a motion to amend?
That's the amendment to remove those four. Counselor Southcott?
So, sorry.
Thank you. Question with regard to 391. I did what Counselor Elliott referred to as there being issues with regard to staff's involvement in that building. Is that true? I'd like to hear from staff, what staff's position is on that particular grant.
Thanks to the Chair, and this is what the Director of Recreation referred to earlier. He did speak to this one specifically and said that they had concerns about asbestos and concerns about what the overrun might be. So that was the project he was speaking to.
Which is why I put it on the list.
Okay. Okay, so basically, what I understand is staff doesn't want that to go forward until staff has dealt with that issue?
Again, I'm working on the spring information that was brought forward, and the information that was brought forward then was that typically these projects as a process moving forward shouldn't just start with the nonprofit group going and trying to work on a municipal building. It should actually be a partnership and run through the city so we can address some of these other concerns.
So that satisfies me.
Counselor Isaacson, and then Counselor Douth.
Thank you. Yeah, when it comes to what I plan to support for, based on these recommendations, I'm going to align myself with the priorities that council passed in terms of what we gave to the Community Forest Board as our priorities. And so I support the removal of these items. It doesn't mean that these are not worthy causes. These are all lovely additions to our community. But I, given the fiscal situation in our community, at the city in particular, I really want to narrow down grants right now, which is, as a nonprofit sector, long-term worker, not my usual line. But given my responsibility for the fiscal responsibility for the city, it's something that I feel like I have to make. And I also do want to highlight the 389 Friends of Cathet, again, a very worthy cause. But if this type of grant gets approved, there are many other organizations who would have and should have applied but didn't because they didn't feel that they met the criteria. I think it's unfair to the broad, the broad community organizations in our community who would have applied if they knew that they could have got a grant for something like this. And so I think it's administratively unfair to include it. So I support removing 389. Thank you.
You, Counselor Douth, and the Mayor.
Oh, I'm, you know, I'm going to stick with what I said previously, is we have appointed a Community Forest Board, and they spend a lot of time looking into each and every one of these applications. Everyone who wants to make an application is free to do it. The board looks at them. They look at them extensively. They make recommendations to council. And I think we should follow those recommendations. So I'm going to vote against this motion and support the recommendations of the Community Forest Board and our working group of council that was working with them to create these recommendations.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Proceed your clarification. If I wanted to make a motion to add an item, would that be considered after the amended motion on the floor is dealt with?
Wouldn't that probably be best?
Thank you.
Case.
I think we can make more amendments later, but this is just the first one.
I'll add some comments there. I had similar thoughts regarding the Friends of Cathet. While I no doubt the value of the organization, we have previously denied the request of other groups who had a similar type of request in a Community Forest grant, and that got rejected. So we have a tradition of, or tendency of recommending capital projects, although apparently the Friends of Cathet did get a grant at some point a couple of years ago that was of a similar nature. But so I'm in favor of the motion as it is right now. And do we have Counselor Palm?
I'll just make note that I support all of the stations of our Community Forest Board that's done all their fine work, many hours dedication, sort out this list. And I think Counselor Douth's motion to support all of these is still on the table. Is that correct, Counselor Douth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're talking about the amendment. So I just want to make note the relationship that we build in this, in this community with volunteer organizations is vitally important for its well-being in the future. Now, one note, that tonight, there is one remaining Community Forest Board member who attends all meetings. The rest have left. This is disrespectful of that organization, of what is happening in this chamber tonight. I just want to state that for the record. Thank you, Chair.
A question for staff regarding 391 about the Timberlane. I guess we just had this conversation regarding the Foundry, that I guess should the Timberlane project stay on the grant list, they would be under the same process, where they'd still need to get building permit and all that stuff. It'd have to get checked out. However, it's the cost of it that is probably in question, that if there's further inspections that might need to be done, it might be bigger than the $54,000 if staff weren't actually getting involved.
That's my understanding as well. And again, reflecting on what Counselor Elliott said about the decision process in the spring, my understanding is that that was a thought that perhaps some of that money could be used for purchasing some of the capital equipment and not all of the other. Because again, I don't know exactly why it was approved in the spring, but moving forward, if they were to utilize those funds, they would have to meet any requirements to get the funding out of it.
I think in the spring, it was just focused on the actual equipment and assuming that it would just go into space they already had. That's really it.
So I asked, when Rod answered my question, there was no new application for the fall. It was the same application. They haven't put further information forward. So the situation is still the same, where we have this outstanding question about whether the project as outlined is covering off whether there would be additional expenses for asbestos or anything else the city would look at if they followed the process of working with the city first before applying for the funding. However, part of their project was to acquire or buy a kiln, which would not require a building permit or any of the sort. building permit or any of the sorts. Although where to put the kiln is a separate question, but they could definitely acquire it with the money. And so my, and they didn't send in a separate application saying, okay, we're going to do this and we need this amount of money for this other part. So we don't know whether they've relooked at it or haven't relooked at it, and we've heard from city staff that they haven't, they still have these outstanding questions around the actual building and what might be in there.
Fair enough. I'm looking at the application now. The one submitted in the fall was for almost $120,000, so we approved $54,000 in the fall because we did a lot of partials, sorry, in the spring. Okay, so on the amendment on the floor, I will call the question, all in favor to exclude those four? Opposed? The motion is carried. And I believe you had amendment.
I'd like to propose an amendment that the committee recommend to Council, the Council approve a fall 2025 grant for $25,000 for Prisma to support completion of the Arts Hub, and if there's a secondar.
Don't need a secondar.
Don't need a secondar.
Go ahead and discuss.
I had a chance to talk with Mr. Hempel before the meeting, and he indicated that it really is prerogative of Council to put forward new motions. And the Art Hub is going to provide a significant opportunity for a wide range of groups. I have toured the facility and it's near completion, and that's the reason for this amended motion.
Sure.
Counselor Elliott.
Did we also have this as an application in the spring intake? Because it's not in the list, so I'm not...
Actually, it's in the list in our fall folder as well.
Okay.
Hang on a second here. Application 405 was submitted again in the fall.
The application is for $25,000?
Note, the Mayor's recommendation is just a partial amount, I believe. It's not the full amount. The total project is $1.4 million. The request was for $153,000. And it is, yeah, it was an updated submission from cost overruns from their spring grant, and they were awarded 90, just under $95,000 in 2024.
So Douth.
Yeah, so you've just read, I think from a 2024 application?
No, from the folder that was just submitted to us this month.
Okay, I just heard 2024.
That was what we awarded them last year.
It was a separate grant.
I'm trying to determine if there was an application to the Community Forest Board for this grant.
Based on my folder, it says one was submitted on September 29th this year.
And they didn't make a recommendation?
I'm not too sure as to why it wasn't in the recommendation. Those that serve on the working group might have some background on that. To, I'm not sure if anyone on Council knows why the Prisma application wasn't included or mentioned in the recommendation letter. Sometimes we hear about why things aren't recommended.
Mr. Hempel did not provide any clarification.
You know, I don't know what our speaking order is right now, but you know, to be consistent with what I've been saying all night, is I thought, and I still think, that Council should follow the recommendations of the Community Forest Board, but the Community Forest Board is not recommending a grant to Prisma in their fall intake.
Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you. My votes tonight will all be related to supporting things, and only things that aligned with the priorities that were set out in the previous motion we adopted, all related to healthcare facilities, youth, culture and recreation, affordable housing and reconciliation. So I won't, while the Prisma does serve youth, it is not specifically focused on youth, so I won't be supporting this. Very excellent cause though, but I'm going to be sticking, also being consistent in a different way than Counselor Douth.
Counselor Elliott.
I'm sorry I didn't read the actual information on this project. Do we know if the funding is specifically for cost overruns for a project that's already completed, or is it something else that they're mailing for money for?
Based on the spreadsheet that we received, that Community Forest submitted, the notes indicate that it was an updated submission from the spring 2025, applying for top-up for cost overruns. And I'll turn it to the CEO.
Through the Chair, I do have some information. I was copied on an email that came through this afternoon, and the request from Prisma noted that they had found a donor for the naming rights but are still short $30,000 to finish the project. And it was a last-minute request to have Community Forest funding. And Mr. Hempel said that because it hadn't gone through the Community Forest Board in terms of an approval, that it would be best to come through someone on Council, and I believe that's how it made its way. So again, lack of information coming at you, or sorry, information coming at you very last minute, but from the email, it sounds like they found a donor for naming rights for the other portion but are still short $30,000. So that's all the information I have on this project.
So again, did they, they haven't started the project, or they've finished the project and they have cost overruns? And that makes a difference because we have specific criteria that says we can't fund things that have already been built.
According to the application for this spring, it talks about the fact that they've raised $1.3 million out of the total amount, and that they're still short $153,000. And so they're asking for a contribution of 150. That's what their fall application was, $153,000, to close the remaining gap to complete the project. It's not saying it's for overruns. It was saying it was to complete the project to be done. But I, again, I don't have, this all came at the last minute. It wasn't a project that the Community Forest approved moving forward, so that's all the information I have.
Counselor Palm, and the Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question that Counselor Elliott already expressed, which was, is the project already, because I know they don't fund those. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the project has not been completed. These funds were allowed to be completed.
Sorry, could you specifically state what the $25,000 would be used for?
There is some finishing wood within the Arts Hub, and that's what used to complete the project.
I will call the question, all those in favor of the amendment to include $25,000 to Prisma in this year's grants. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Palm, I didn't see.
I'm going with the Community Forest recommendation.
Okay, so that motion fails.
Counselor Isaacson.
Another amendment motion. I'm going to stick to my consistency. I, my amendment will be to exclude Project 392, which is the Lawn Bowling Club, 413, Gillies Bay Tennis Courts, 415 Salmon Society, 425 Curling Club, and 427 Healthcare Auxiliary. In my rationale, I think each of us are being inconsistent and holding to our values in different ways here, and for me, this is alignment with Council priorities. These ones are all excellent applications. They meet needs of our communities in a variety of ways. But if we remove these, the ones that remain are about youth, recreation, affordable and affordable housing. And so my intention is to get us there. That's what my, I'm trying to be voting consistently tonight. Again, this is not, yeah, everyone is doing great work, the organizations in the Community Forest Board. This is about being in tight fiscal times with a discreet pot that we can draw from, and I consider anything that we are granting will result in taxation at some point. And so what am I willing to tax for? And these are, the ones that would remain if these are removed are youth, recreation, and affordable housing.
Mr. Mayor.
In our priority, we use the word "culture." And when young people have an opportunity to explore arts, as they would have at a Arts Hub, that is an essential part. So we have a counselor saying that that's not cultural, yet on another hand, it is cultural. So I think I'm befuddled as to why an Arts Hub, which would allow individuals of all ages to come together and develop a culture of music and arts, would not be considered cultural.
I don't think that refers to this amendment.
It's true, it doesn't refer to specifically this amendment. I will allow for a reply. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, so the organizations that I'm removing or not supporting are not ones that are specifically for youth. So for example, the Curling Club does offer youth programming, but they are not a youth organization, whereas the Swim Club is a youth swim club, the Gymnastics Society, the Brooks Mountain Bike Team, these are organizations that are specifically oriented to youth. And while Prisma does serve youth, and youth absolutely benefit from Prisma, they are not specifically youth. So that's the lens that I'm putting on. It's not that the culture isn't valuable and that there is culture. I absolutely agree. But I'm focusing my support tonight on organizations that are specifically about youth and recreation and culture and health. So that's my incredibly narrow focus tonight, unfortunately.
Comments on Counselor Elliott, then Counselor Palm, and Counselor Douth.
I can see the rationale for most of the ones on the list. The Powell River Healthcare Auxiliary that is trying to finish their building, specific purpose is to fund and support health facilities. And so it doesn't fit the, it does fit within the criteria that we put forward as Council. And so if you just don't want to give them money, that's one thing, but to say they don't fit the criteria we put forward would not be true. They're looking at capital investments. Their normal organization is to support health facilities. And so I could support this list for the reasons put forward if 427 was taken off of the amendment.
Counselor Palm.
I just have one, Chair, one simple comment. I see that our Community Forest Board member is making note of what's on the screen. I don't doubt he'll report to his board. And this is, in my estimation, just to double down on disrespect for the volunteer group that's helped rebuild the city of Powell River. Thank you, Chair.
So Douth.
And I'm, you know, I'm going to reiterate once again, just for those who might be curious, the reason I am not in favor of this amendment is because I support the hard work and the recommendations by the Community Forest Board. Look at all of those things, Lawn Bowling Club, the Tennis Courts, they both provide, you know, healthy recreation for various members of our community. I think I was even in a discussion with the Townsite Raphears Association about how the Lawn Bowling Organization was having a youth involvement event to make sure they could prolong the life of their support and get young people involved. Tennis Courts, well, pickleball's there too. You know, if you're not using them for tennis, they could be used for pickleball. The Salmon Society, all kinds of youth go out there and work at the hatchery, observing the fish, helping to strip the eggs, making sure the resource is maintained. The Powell River Auxiliary, that funds the thrift shop. All, you know, not everybody who shops at the thrift store is over 65. A lot of young people get their clothing there, they get things they need to make an affordable effort at having a decent life in Powell River. But I'm going to stick with the idea that we've got applications coming in from a lot of good organizations, and we've got a Community Forest Board that spends their time, donates their time, making recommendations. And if we're going to ignore the recommendations, we should just get rid of the board entirely, and Council can make up their own mind, and we can spend more time doing it. Frankly, I think we should appreciate that we have a bunch of people that are concerned about their community, and for no return for them personally, put their time and effort into making these decisions. And I support their decisions rather than trying to second-guess them.
Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you. So corporate, through the Chair, to corporate officer, to remove 427, could I do that myself as the original mover, or do we do an amendment to the amendment, or how might
All right, corporate officer.
Testing. So can you restate your question?
If I was to want to remove 427, I was the original mover of this amendment, I feel like our procedure bylaws have changed a little bit. Can I friendly amend myself or do an amendment to the amendment? How might I remove 427?
I think that in the circumstances, particularly where you have a procedure bylaw that doesn't require a secondar in these committee meetings, unless there is an objection from another member of Council, I would say that you can remove it. So that's the question.
Okay, I'll, then I ask to remove 427 from this list. And I still support excluding it, but the likelihood of this to pass, it sounds like Counselor Elliott would need it to be removed. I again am super narrow on my rationales tonight. Healthcare Auxiliary absolutely funds health facilities. They are not a health facility themselves, and these organizations that serve youth are not youth-serving organizations, but they happen to serve youth, absolutely. So just being consistent, but I will just ask to remove 427 from that list so that the four other ones remain.
Okay. Counselor Elliott.
Just a comment or rebuttal, I guess. The Hospital Auxiliary does not happen, and I know you didn't say that, but it's kind of alluding to it, happens to fund facilities. Its actual sole purpose is to fund healthcare facilities, and we can't always fund everything they do. And it's an excellent way to fund all healthcare facilities by making sure that they're up and running. And as a byproduct, they support youth as one of the best-run thrift stores in our community, and youth benefit from more than most. And that's just a byproduct of how they do business. So I just wanted to say, it's not something they happen to do as a byproduct, it's their sole purpose.
Okay, so calling the motion, the amendment on the floor to exclude the following four applications. Favor. And all opposed. Motion carries. Always our corporate officer is on top of it.
Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
My day started at 5:00 AM, so I'm going to have to excuse myself.
Thank you, Mayor.
Able to stay for a couple of minutes? I think we're at the vote. Able to stay for a couple of minutes? I think we're at the vote process.
You can't.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have any other amendments to what started this councillor Douth's motion? We address?
Not an amendment, but a question.
Okay.
Can staff tell us where the budget, if this motion passes with the amendments that have passed, where we, uh, where we would be at within our allotted budget?
Believe it's around five hundred and four thousand?
Fine, we had the two fifty before.
Five hundred and four, nine hundred and thirty.
Through the chair, yes, we can, uh, five hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
So within the amount we had allotted?
Within the six hundred and forty thousand allocated for the fall, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further additions or changes, councillor Palm. It's a five hundred and four thousand.
Uh, correct. Through the chair, it is the five hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Good. So, uh, call the question, all in favor of the motion as amended. Any opposed? Unopposed, the motion carries. Okay, now, uh, on to recommendation two. Just to confirm, corporate officer, does anything change on the financial plan? Um, recommendation based on our recent conversation or?
I think we move two and then three with that final number in it.
Yeah, I was just confirming the numbers.
Yeah, through the chair, that is correct. Nothing has changed for number two and then for the third, uh, recommendation in there. If there's a dollar value that can be put in.
Okay, perfect. Can I get a reader for number two? Councillor Elliott.
Um, do I have to read it or do I just say I move the second recommendation in the package?
Mm-hmm. In the past, we've liked to read for those that are just listening online.
Well, I moved that committee recommend to council that council direct staff to amend city of Powell River twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine financial plan bylaw two seven five one twenty twenty-five to increase the project budget for city of Powell River project four thirty Lager Sport Arena by the amount of thirty thousand dollars and to increase the project budget for city of Powell River project four three five Seawalk Repair Project by the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand with the increases funded by the Powell River Community Forest Reserve Fund. Um, and then I move that the committee recommend to council that council direct staff to amend city of Powell River twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine financial plan bylaw two seven five one twenty twenty-five to include projects approved by council in the amount, oh, in the spring and fall Powell River Community Forest nonprofit grant intake with the increase funded by the Powell River Community Forest Reserve Fund. Do I need to add the number or?
The motion, through the chair, the motion was structured in a way that as long as there was a separate motion with a dollar value associated with, which there will be based on the motion, I believe, that has happened, which was the approval of the projects with the deduction of those ones and the addition of the foundry will end up with a dollar value. And so this motion as is works.
Okay, when it comes up on council, you can actually put the number in anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's my motion then.
Any discussion? None. Call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Unopposed? Motion carries.